This work session of the Cleveland Municipal School District Board of Education will come to order. Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ellicott.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Briggs.
Here.
Ms. Jones. Pastor Jones. Mrs. LeBrun.
Here.
Ms. Peak.
Here.
Dr. Shridar.
Here.
Mrs. Welchow.
Here.
There are seven members present.
Thank you. I ask everyone who wishes to rise and participate in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this work session, the board will continue the practice that we started last month of placing a number of resolutions on a consent agenda where the board will vote to adopt most or all of the resolutions before us in a single vote without discussion. Under our new Student Outcomes Focused Governance Structure, the board now receives resolutions at least 10 days in advance of the board meeting so that board members have an opportunity to review them in detail and ask any questions they have about the resolutions. Those questions and answers are then posted along with the agenda materials for the public to review. If board members wish to have a resolution removed from the consent agenda and discussed and voted on separately, they may request that such resolution be removed from the consent agenda. This evening's work session consent agenda includes the minutes of the last board meeting and resolutions 4.01 through 4.04, which are employee discipline resolutions. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve this work session's consent agenda consisting of agenda items 3.02 through 4.04.
Show movement.
Thank you. Mr. Stockdale, will you please call the roll on this motion?
Ms. Ellicott.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Briggs.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. LeBrun.
Yes.
Ms. Peak.
Yes.
Dr. Shridar.
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow.
Yes.
Motion passes with eight votes.
Thank you. The motion passes and the minutes are approved and the resolutions are adopted. This evening's board meeting agenda also includes 13 resolutions in the areas of Board of Education, Finance, Operations, Academics, External Affairs, Excellence in Culture, and Legal, which the board will vote on as a part of its consent agenda at our September 23rd Board Business Meeting. I do want to note for the board also that there was a resolution shared with the board previously, was it 5.02, Mr. Britschoff? Regarding the progress monitoring calendar, which I asked the CEO to pull and bring back for the business meeting after some changes are made. All right, the board will now hold its monthly monitoring of goals and guardrails. Dr. Morgan?
Thank you so much, Chair Ellicott. We are proud to bring our next round of monitoring to the board, and we're also going to be doing guardrails. So, last month, we did guardrail five? Oh, well, yeah, it's our area five, but it was guardrail two. Today, we're bringing guardrail three, which we call it under interim measure six, and it's specifically focused on community engagement, and it's timely because this week, we've kicked off a lot of engagement, of engagement in all of our schools around building brighter futures, but then open houses are taking place across all of our schools tomorrow and Thursday, and it's an opportunity, one, for our families to just find out what's taking place in our schools as the year is starting up, meet their child's principal, as well as their teacher, and find out all the things they need to find out about their school, but it's also a very unique opportunity that we'll be sharing information on building brighter futures and this next round of community engagement, of which we're going to be talking more specifically about individual schools' data and giving schools a data snapshot. So, we're going to talk a little bit about that in a moment, but just a reminder of this work we're doing around our goals and guardrails, and we're really grateful for this charge that the board has given us around these three areas: early literacy, math proficiency, college readiness. I know in the month of October, we're going to be getting into some of our academic data, and we'll be really proud to share with this board some of the academic data we saw last year, really compelling growth within our system, all aligned to these areas, and in the areas we need to work on, as we've been previewing, college and career readiness, chronic absenteeism, it's also aligned to the goals and guardrails. So, it's just a reiteration that the charge that the board has given us is the right direction of the growth we're seeing and progress we're seeing in the system, but also the charge of the work we have to do moving forward. As I mentioned, today, we will be focused on guardrail number three, which is focused on community engagement. We have our wonderful external affairs team here that is on standby as we have questions that are there to answer any questions led by Chief Farmer Cole and many others on her team to have this, but specifically, guardrail three is a charge that you guys have given me and our system that we will not make any significant decisions without meaningfully engaging our community. The first one is really thinking about making sure we have a diverse group of stakeholders that we'll meet with that is inclusive of staff, students, community partners, nonprofit partners, faith leaders, elected leaders, neighborhood commissioners. So, all of those different things are included in interim measure 6.1, and then 6.2, interim measure 6.2, is making sure that we will reach 100% of schools that potentially could be impacted through building brighter futures, and we want to talk about the work that we're doing and the progress we're making. Unlike many of our other measures that we do when we do progress monitoring, this one is much more qualitative in nature. You know, last week, or not last week, but the last board meeting we had, we were looking at quantitative data measures that are related to student achievement, what they, students know or will be able to do, and many of the areas that we will focus on for goals and guardrails will be quantitative in nature, but by the nature of this guardrail that you guys have charged us with, this one is qualitative in nature. So, just reminding everyone of the phases of engagement that we've done for building brighter futures. So, we've kicked off our engagement in the spring, and as you can see, the charge that we started with the work we were doing with building brighter futures, we wanted to make sure that we reached every community meeting, had community meetings in every region, of which we did, that we had virtual meetings to accommodate those who were not able to attend those in-person sessions, that there were principal-led staff meetings in every building, that we also had discussions with our Student Advisory Council, as well as our Parent Advisory Council, that we engage with each of you guys through not only our board meetings, but also board retreats, we also doing presentations to many different diverse stakeholders, and then also small group one-on-one briefings. All of that took place in the spring and the summer. As we're getting ready to kick this off in the fall, starting this week, this is like the week to kick this off for the fall, we're starting to do our regional meetings, we're going to do regional meetings in every region again, we'll talk about those dates, the open house presentations that I talked about, where there's going to be a video across all of our open houses where I'll be sharing more information about building brighter futures for our families. That video also will be available on our website, so families will be able to access that, so a quick, short 10-minute video, and then staff meetings at every school, those started today, and they'll go through the rest of this month. Also, we'll be kicking off the discussions with both the Student and Parent Advisory Councils, which will take place next month. We'll have those virtual sessions that we've had before, State of the Schools, which is coming up on October 21st, that got announced, our date with State of the Schools and launching State of the Schools got announced last week, so we definitely encourage those that want to attend and hear what's taking place within our district and also the work we're doing around building brighter futures, we encourage you to come. We'll continue small group briefings and then also board meeting briefings and media briefings. Phase two of this work, which will continue in the fall and also into the winter, are staff meetings at every impacted school, once we have recommendations, as well as family meetings at every impacted schools, on-demand sessions again, board-led engagement, small one-on-one briefings and media briefing. So, this is just showing you that full engagement that we're doing from the start of the fall, all the way through really into the winter, this could take us into the early part of next school year, but you're just seeing the early arc of the full engagement that we intend to do, and some of which we finished. Just a reminder of the spring community sessions we did, we hosted, I believe there were seven sessions across many different regions in our city, and we had 408 people attend the in-person sessions, and for the virtual meetings that we had in place, which there were three, we had 68, to bring a total of 476 total attendees. This is a good amount of people that came to one of the community sessions, it's not a large representation of our entire community population, but there were staff members, family members, and also many others that came to those meetings, some of our members of the bond accountability came to those meetings. In the appendix of this deck, which you have all access to and everyone who is attending this meeting, as well as who are watching virtually, you will also have access to the appendix. There were other sessions that we did. We had staff meetings in every single school, and we got over 600 pieces of feedback from those staff meetings in terms of staff members giving us feedback at every single school. We had a Student Advisory Council meeting that took place, where we got over 100 pieces of feedback from our students telling us what they would love to see when we think about this plan and their understanding of the plan. We also, in that appendix, there's an analysis of the survey data collected from these 476 members that went to meetings. Also, between the spring and the summer, this is the word map, but these are all the other people we met with. It was a really busy summer, it was a fast summer, but we were hard at work, making sure that we were talking to people about building brighter futures, but then also preparing for the fall as we're gearing up this next round of community engagement, and you can see everyone from elected leaders to, you know, community leaders, to the board, so we have some friends of board, boards at different schools, so like when we think about Cleveland School of Science and Medicine has a board, meeting with them, meeting with Argonaut, who's a partner for Davis, on a few occasions. So, these are people that we met with throughout the summer, not only just doing sometimes formal presentations, but also informal gathering of feedback, just to hear that, and you can see in many of the different groups. I also want to point out the Ohio Legislative Delegation, who we met with twice, meeting with our leaders, elected leaders at the state level of what we're doing, the goals we're having around this plan, and some of the challenges we're facing. We've also been engaging regularly with our media. Media is a really important conduit in terms of getting information out and also a way that we can receive good feedback and also good questions from when we're thinking about how we're engaging the community and what we're expressing, and so we've had a plan with really making sure we engage our media regularly. And then also, there have been many different ways that we get feedback, so through staff surveys, of which even this fall, we'll continue to get feedback through surveys, whether that those are our staff, our students, as well as community leaders as we go out to do these regional meetings, and much like the regional meetings that we had in the spring, we will also be gathering in-the-moment feedback, so we will have team members from CMSD at tables having discussion. Even though I'll be presenting information, the most important part of those meetings are when people can discuss, share the feedback, and give us the feedback, and those are oftentimes where real, authentic, honest discussions are taking place, and we're receiving all of that feedback and taking all of those notes and putting it into the feedback that we're gathering. And then Let's Talk. Let's Talk is also a platform that we've now been using for a couple of years. We kicked it off with the CEO listening tour that I started when I first came here, and we continue to really use it to give feedback. So, these are all different ways in which we're engaging with the community and that the community can give us input on the building brighter futures process. Some of the common themes that we've heard in the engagement that we've done thus far. First, I want to remind this board and everyone who's watching of the elements of the CMSD experience we are striving for. When we think about the CMSD experience we want through building brighter futures, there are four elements. We want to make sure our scholars We want to make sure our scholars have the opportunity to explore their co-curricular passions, whether that is through extracurriculars or whether that is through a career pathways and exploration. We want to make sure that we have these offerings at every school, no matter where a kid attends. The same thing with clear pathways for post-secondary readiness, and that starts with having a high-quality curriculum in every single school. And that's the work that we've been doing with our academics team, but that also extends into making sure that we have college and career readiness at every single school. And if you've been to some of our sessions, you know a pillar of building brighter futures is to ensure that 100% of our high schools have career pathways, which are also the trades, and that 100% of our high schools have college credit offerings as well, and that 100% of our K8s offer additional opportunities beyond your basic art, music, and PE. So that's work that we're doing through building brighter futures. We also want to make sure we have supportive teachers and staff. So that goes into the work that we're doing to make sure that teachers can co-collaborate with or collaborate with peers of the same subject area, the same grade level area. We want to make sure that there is a robust staff experience in the opportunities that we're providing them and that we're supporting them with the opportunities that we have. We had the opportunity today to meet with our union leadership, they are a key group, and not only just thinking about our teacher unions, but our union leaders from operations, our union leaders from our administrative assistant. So we were able to meet with all of these leaders as we just think about how do we lean in and support our staff through this process. And then finally, a key pillar of building brighter futures is making sure we have buildings that are worthy of staff. So that's reminding you of the student experience we're striving for. Some themes that we've heard throughout this process is really thinking about how will the plan ensure strong academic programming? And no matter what room I'm in or who I'm talking about, that is a promising pillar of building brighter futures. Everyone wants to ensure that our scholars have a high-quality curriculum, a high-quality education. There's no one that is denying that our kids deserve the best, no matter where they go to school. And so you see that theme throughout. I think some of the questions are, how are you going to do this? How can you do this, provide more for kids while also saving money? So those are some of the questions we receive. Safety is also a big question as you're reconfiguring the district. We know that part of building brighter futures is taking some buildings offline and also thinking about repurposing the work that we're doing throughout our system. How will you do that safely? How will you also keep staff in mind? Will staffing be a part of the impacts that take place with building brighter futures? Our special populations, not only thinking about special education, but also pre-K, thinking about English language learners, gifted education, these are all special populations that we are thinking about, and they came up in the themes. Building reuse, you close a lot of buildings, what are you doing with the buildings? What is the plan? These were things that came up. And then finally, transportation. Another thing that we want to remind everyone of are what we will be using when we bring recommendations to this board. This has been consistent with the information we shared in the spring. There are primary data points we will be using when making recommendations to the board. We will be looking at student enrollment at every building. We'll be looking at enrollment trends. Is that building, a building that is growing in enrollment or decreasing in enrollment? Building condition. We talked about the work that we've done with MGT to get a building condition score across all of our schools, to see the quality of that, of where our schools are at. And based on that work, we know that 70% of our students currently are in an upgraded building, that's the majority of our students, but not all students are. And then building size and use. We really want to make sure that there is the capacity in the building. So if we want to get to that healthy enrollment that we talked about in the spring, of 450 in our K8s and 500 in our high schools, do the buildings have the capacity to hold that many students, or is it a small building that cannot hold it? So those are the things we're looking at. Some other areas that we're looking at, we want to look at student outcomes. We, you know, as we're looking at this, we would hope that even as we make impacts in our buildings, that students will go to a higher-performing school. So that's one of the things we want to look at. Of course, we have our current report card data, we'll be getting new report card data any moment now, but we really want to make sure that our students are going to a better, a better school. We're looking at those special populations. Is it a school that has pre-K? What are the needs for special education? Historical trends, safety, transportation, these are all things that we factor in. And then also, as we mentioned in the community meetings, the feedback that community members are providing also factors in. So these are all elements that are factors when we think about the work that we're doing. These are the upcoming formal engagements that are taking place. There are several informal, or I wouldn't even say informal, but several of those smaller group meetings are still taking place over the month of September and October. So meeting with community leaders, meeting with organizations, meeting with elected leaders, all of these different things, faith leaders, everything that you guys have asked us to, a charge to do, we're doing that over the course of the next few months. But the formal engagement that we're doing kicks off with open houses that take place both tomorrow and Thursday. We have our regional meetings, will span over three weeks, which will be, it kicked off on September 24th. In a moment, I'll show you those dates for those meetings and where they will take place. And they'll go through October 9th, so we encourage people to attend. We also have school meetings. Every single school will have a building brighter futures meeting. They will be facilitated by their principal, but there will be someone from central office there to not only support the principal with facilitation, but be there on-site and on-hand to answer questions and just provide support. And then, of course, we have the state of the schools on Tuesday, October 21st. These are those community meeting dates. So today, we're launching those community meeting dates that will take place across our city. We'll be excited to be in two of our new facilities, both in Gallagher and Clark. But you can see other buildings that we'll be at. Some of these are a little different in terms of the location that we are in versus the ones we were in the spring, but we're going to hit every single region. And we will also do two virtual meetings. So if you were not able, if you're not able to attend an in-person session, you can come to a virtual meeting. If you want to come to a virtual meeting and an in-person session, please have at it. If you want to come to multiple in-person sessions, please have at it. We've had people do that before, and sometimes even though the information is consistent and the things that will be shared is consistent, it is very helpful sometimes when people come back and get more information or if there are other additional questions that they have. So as you see, these will be taking place starting on Wednesday, September 24th, going all the way through Thursday, October 9th. So let's talk a little bit about what will be shared in these meetings. So, one, we cannot underscore enough the frame of what building brighter futures is. So in each of these meetings, there'll be some of the presentation that we've already shared about the challenges we're facing in our system, but the promise that we have to build a brighter future. And in the coming months, we're going to be sharing a lot of the progress, like I've shared before with the, you know, this board before, but we'll be sharing even more incredible academic progress from last year. So there's a lot to be proud of and a lot to celebrate, even more growth in terms of progress that we've had, but there are areas we have to focus on. We've talked about the new college and career workforce military readiness and how that's going to have an impact on our system and how we're not providing college credit and college and career readiness in all of our schools. That's an area we must focus in on. We also must focus in on other areas and making sure that we're improving the system. And so we want in these meetings to, for people to understand the reality and the potential and the opportunity we have in this moment to do something extraordinary and great for all of our kids. And at the same time, we have a responsibility to be great stewards of our finances and our resources and to plan ahead. At our next board meeting, Chief Stockdale will be sharing more information about our outlook on our financial forecast. And once again, there's work we have to do to really live into the aspirations and the dreams that we have in our system while doing it fiscally sound. So when we go to these meetings, we'll be sharing some of that. The difference in the meetings we're about to have is we will be getting more specific in our school-level data. So there's school-level data that every single school will have. Schools will have a snapshot that looks like this. Some of it has changed slightly in the ones that people are going to see, but there's a snapshot that every school will have of what their enrollment is, what their enrollment trend is, what their building size is, does it have the capacity to hold a little bit more? And the other area there, it is, oh, the building condition score, like what their building condition is. Underneath on the bottom, you're going to be able to see what is that school's rating? And right now, we have our former ratings. As soon as we have new information, we'll update, date that as well. But also, does the school offer pre-K? Does it offer college and career readiness programs? These are all information that we're, that are on these scorecards. We also, not scorecards, on these data sheets, data snapshots. Also in the data snapshots, it will share information about if the school offers athletics, if it offers different extracurricular activities. So this is information that parents will have through open houses, all staff members will have in their staff buildings. And we want to make sure schools understand where they are relative to the broader decisions we're going to make. In our regional meetings, we will be comparing schools to other schools in that region, but also looking at what schools look like in comparison to the district. So it is the same information we shared in the spring. We had a rolled-up view looking at percentages of enrollment across the city. In the spring, we looked at the percentage of the building condition scores across the city. Now we'll actually have specific data of schools and how that looks like relative to the region and the district. So this is the information the community can expect. It is the new information we have here, but every school has this information and it's nothing, it's nothing that is new. It's the data that is for the school, and it doesn't, the sheet doesn't say anything in terms of whether the school will have an impact or not. It is just making sure people understand where their school is relative to the information we'll be using to make recommendations. That is the presentation I have now. Are there anything Chief Farmer Cole or members of your team that you guys wanted to add prior to questions?
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Morgan. Dr. Shreedar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Morgan, thank you so much for this, for both giving us this material ahead of time and also this comprehensive presentation. You, I flagged my question before you got to the last slide, so you already began to answer my question, but I'm going to ask you to say a little more about this. As we think strategically and, you know, the process that you have been leading in terms of thinking about the facilities that will continue to remain open, the facilities that will go offline, they are, the decisions that you're making are not based on a star rating. They're not based on, you know, any one of these individual metrics. And yet, on the last page, the one-pager that you have, by virtue of the fact that it's a one-pager, must be brief, right? So can you speak a little bit about how you will lead the community through this, what you have on Slide 11, which is this really rich set of data points and things that you have been carefully considering versus the high-level summary? Because, you know, and I'm going to, and I'm going to base it on another data point, which you presented earlier, of nearly 500 people that engaged with us in the spring to summer. 500 is a small number compared to the overall community. So the, even if we say that the people that come to these meetings have a much richer presentation, the vast majority of the population is not going to have that kind, the benefit of the presentation. So can you talk a little bit about, again, I'm not asking about tactics, I'm not asking about what kinds of, you know, phone calls we'll make and things like that, but rather, how are you, as the leader in the district, thinking about ensuring that the community at large is in touch with your decision-making process?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question, and it has many different parts. I'll actually start with your latter part. The difference between what we are doing this fall versus what we're doing in the spring is by having the touch point for open houses. We know not all of our parents attend open houses, but a lot of parents do. It's a lot, we have parents, we're going to have open houses at every single school, and parents will, parents will go to open house. So we're going to reach a broader audience. Also, by creating, there, we have a website that we have on Building Brighter Futures Now, where there are a ton of resources already. There's a video that we did of the actual spring session that's actually on the website now. The video that we're doing at open house will be available on the website. It's a 10-minute video, so we encourage people, if you just want to know what's taking place, please watch it. All the information also around school snapshots, some of the information we're going to have in terms of comparing the regions, schools among the region, that also is going to be on the website, so we're going to push that out there. But the difference now is by reaching those open houses. And what's nice about the open house, it's only two days across all of our schools, but we will be there. Not only will our school leaders be there, I will be there in some form, but I'm doing the presentation virtually for everyone in those meetings. But we have all of our staff members that are there doing the facilitation and answering questions. So that is a touch point that we're going to have to get information to families. And then this information that we're launching in the data sheets that we have, we will be putting that online, and we do need to make sure that family members have access to that. The first part of your question is a really rich one, and I appreciate the question because it is about the complexity of the decision-making. And people often ask, like, have you guys made a decision? What is it? Isn't it easy? It's not that easy. When you think about our four primary data points in terms of student enrollment, enrollment trends, building condition, building size and use. This morning, when I was meeting with the union leadership, we were looking at a data snapshot of one school that was very, very low enrollment, had a very negative enrollment trend, it was a negative 21% enrollment trend, had an excellent building condition score, it was one that was over 80, and also had the capacity to have about 500 students. So this is a school that, on some indicators, is struggling, on other indicators, it's strong. And when we look at all of our buildings, there are elements of all of that across the board, and that's why these other factors take into account, and also the feedback that we hear from the community take into account. And so it's not that simple when making decisions because it's not that clear-cut. And so as we do this process, we do really want to engage with people, we do want to hear your feedback. The information that Chief Stockdale is also going to share next week, we also have a real financial obligations that we have and more information that we have to do really on our financial work that we have ahead of us. And so we have to balance all of these things when taking this into consideration, but we will be communicating not only the information we have on our finances, but the information we're thinking about in the thought process along the way.
I don't see any other table tents up, so I want to give the opportunity. All right. Dr. Morgan, just my comment is, you know, I was wondering when you, before you sort of presented this to the board and shared it via email, what your learnings had been from the first set of community engagement on this, on building brighter futures? And I know that it's not your first time doing community engagement, but I'm glad to see the opportunity for the parent open houses. The school-level meetings, I think, are incredibly important and the fact that, can you speak to those a little bit? I know you're sort of deputizing other staff to lead those.
Yeah. We wanted to make sure that we have multiple touch points in all of our schools. And of course, though it would be nice to get into all of the schools myself and do those presentations, we can't, I can't be split up and do all of that in a short period of time. So in the best way possible, one, through our open houses, everyone getting that, the information from me, that's a way to do that, but then also really making sure that we are talking with our central office staff and our principals to make sure they really understand and how to communicate this information. Now, all of the regional meetings, if you come to a regional meeting, you will have me directly, but we do really want to make sure for all of those staff meetings and all of those school-level meetings that everyone had a touch point. I will also say in the school community, there, as a former teacher and then also as a school leader, there's something about your school. And so people like it when central office comes in, but they, they, they trust their fellow colleagues, they trust their principal. Those are people they work with every day and see, and so it's really important that that information is coming from people that they talk to all the time. It doesn't mean that that person has to, you know, is ambassador of all the information that is taking place, but they are definitely sharing the information and gathering the questions and gathering feedback. So we did really want to make sure that there was much more of a personalized touch and, as we're calling it, kind of a white-glove experience for both our staff, our students and community. Community engagement is never perfect. There's always work to be done. You can always do more of it, and processes like these are very tough and difficult, but where we can learn and do something different and better, we want to make sure we can.
Great. Yeah, and I know that everyone loves to see you and have you come in, but I know that also it is incredibly important for you to leverage your other leaders and that they are participating in this process, so I think it's great to see. All right. Thank you for that report, Dr. Morgan. We look forward to our next progress monitoring discussions on goals and guardrails. Is there any old business? All right, is there any new business? My new business is that on behalf of the board, I would like to wish a happy birthday. My new business is that on behalf of the board, I would like to wish a happy birthday to Ms. Lebron and Pastor Jones, who are celebrating birthdays this month. The next regular board meeting will be a board business meeting on Tuesday, September 23rd at 6:30 PM at Garrett Morgan High School. And before we adjourn, I want to wish everybody a happy primary election day. If you haven't voted, you still have 21 minutes to go do it.[1756.15][1756.15][laughter] The chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn this board business meeting.
So moved.
Hearing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.